Good to go, Brian.
Great, thanks. So I can call the meeting to order if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. Can we have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So as the title of the meeting makes clear, tonight, we're going to give an update from the B and G Committee on the capital project. So and talk about the work that we've done up to this date and where we're going. The purpose of the timing of the update now is that, as we talked about prior meetings, we put the Phase One projects out for bid. We've received those bids. Our professional partners have reviewed the bids and made recommendations in terms of the bids. And those are intended to be on the agenda next week for approval, given the timing of the process. But before we approved bids, we wanted to obviously have an update on the project as a whole. What, where the bids came in and where we are on an overall basis for the project. So that's the purpose of tonight's meeting. So we'll, in between Carol and myself, will walk through the various aspects. And then there'll be obviously opportunity for trustees to ask questions about the projects and where we are and where we're going. Just to remind both the trustees and, you know, others in the audience. Obviously, we had a presentation, you know, now probably almost two years ago before the bond about the projects and the scope. And at this point, we're going to talk about what's, you know, today focus on Phase One projects first. And that's work that will get underway this summer. So I guess with that, Carol, you want me to keep going? Do you want to start? How do you want to do this?
Just give me a second, Brian.
Yeah.
Actually, Chris is going to start the first couple of slides and then I'll jump in, okay?
Sounds good.
Sorry, I was on mute.
So I hope everybody is seeing things well. And I think, Brian, thank you. I think you framed it nicely to begin where we are in this overall process. But I think it's important to provide a little bit of background information to refresh the community's memory. If we go back to May 21st, 2019, and it's hard to believe it was that long ago. The community came to the polls and supported nearly $18.9 million capital project. This has a relatively extensive scope of work that has numerous priorities that we articulated. But as you can see, we've highlighted a few for you in addressing aging facility and infrastructure needs, HVAC or heating and cooling upgrades, repairs and replacement in some buildings, paving and sidewalk projects, a number of safety and security improvements across the district that are much needed. We're looking to modernize our academic spaces to make sure that we're supporting the learning needs today and those that we anticipate in the future. And then, as we've talked about much through this process, we have dire needs for storage space. And so in doing so, we look to tackle some of those needs. This project, when it comes to construction, has been broken out into two phases. The first phase are the items that are being tackled first, obviously. And you can see from the slide before you that the Dowslane Boiler Project has already been completed and is keeping us nice and toasty over at Dowslane. It was completed on time and we have had no mechanical problems. So we're very pleased with that work. But also included in this is renovations at the campus that are really classified under the middle school for application purposes to the State Education Department. Here, we're looking at closures to the campus. We think of our beautiful open campus that we have, but our security concerns have motivated us to want to enclose the campus. We're looking at improving and upgrading the vestibules at the middle school, making improvements to science rooms, new storage space, casework as far as cabinetry and shelving in the music room, and then new bleachers and a press box near the track and fields. We are also right by the track and field constructing what we called the Campus Learning Pavilion or the CLP, because you all know in education, we need as many acronyms as we can possibly come up with. But this is a really unique space that's going to be constructed right next to Mizaros Field and Ole Track. This is going to be space for an outdoor classroom, much-needed athletic equipment storage, space for our athletic trainer to be able to treat our student athletes, concession stand to be able to sell goods and snacks during sporting events, and then outdoor restrooms. At Dowslane, a number of important projects, looking at a new roof above the library area, providing air conditioning in the gymnasium and new flooring in the gym, new vestibules to increase the safety and security, an outdoor bathroom, repaving the parking lot. And then included in this, you can see in italics, which I'll come back to in a second, is the basketball court, which would be paved. Then district-wide, this is really multifaceted need here. We're looking to improve the lighting. In doing so, we're going to install LED lighting across the district, which, as you can imagine, is going to have tremendous return in utility expenses and the life of the actual bulbs that we'll be utilizing. And then card access, swipe card type entry for our facilities across the district, a facility shed at Dowslane. Now, originally, we were seeking to and planning to have this construction begin this past summer, the summer of 2020. However, because of all the delays associated with COVID and the needs to acquire approvals, our actual building permits from the State Education Department, we are not able to meet that timeline. I do want to give kudos to the Board of Education, the Buildings and Grounds Committee, our entire professional team of partners, because we are on target. We are on timeline. We did our work here in Irvington. However, because of the delays in Albany, which are understandable, we are not able to hit that timeline. So now we are looking to actually do this work as we close out the spring and through the summer of this year, 2021. We've received bids for most of the work that's listed on this slide within Phase One, with the exception of those areas that I referenced that are in italics. And so to bring you back to that, that's looking at the basketball court paving. And it's also looking at the facility shed at Dowslane. So we don't have bids or they're not included in this particular aspect of the project yet. But as we move forward in the presentation, we'll discuss the thinking and the rationale behind that. So when we think of the next phase and when we're thinking of where that may land in a calendar, let's think next summer. And in doing so, we have a number of projects that are going to be addressed across the district. And when we think about how we broke these into two different groups, not only was it looking at the amount of work that we could potentially manage and on our school campuses and within the district within a given period of time, but we have to think about the ways that the construction projects will flow. We have to think about contractors not getting in each other's way to be able to slow projects. So we deliberately had to break some of these apart. So in doing so, when we look to the summer of 2022, we're going to be looking to construct a facility storage building that will be behind the main high school building. We're looking at improvements at the high school and the library gym arts building, which we refer to as the LGA. So in this piece of the project, we're looking at entirely new entry and vestibule at the high school to have its own unique entrance. And in doing so, there's a massive amount of work we have to navigate there. We're looking to upgrade UNIvents, which are the heating units in many classrooms. We're going to provide air conditioning in the mar gym, casework. So again, this is more storage cabinets and shelving in the art rooms, a girls' bathroom upgrade, and then much-needed library renovation that's going to be multifaceted and enhance and modernize the space and allow us to make much more utility out of the square footage we have available to us. In the theater gym building, we're going to provide air conditioning to the campus gym. And then we're going to install new carpeting in the theater. At Main Street School, we are going to look at some improvements in the science room and computer lab. When we think of science room, I really want to make you think about STEM projects and PLTW, because that's the space that will be renovated. We're going to put air conditioning in the gymnasium. We're going to paint and do some renovations to the bell tower atop the building. And here again is another area in the italics, enclosing a walkway that leads from the Main Street School building, the main building, to the gymnasium building. And then looking at the Dow's Innovation Suite, our crafty new name for the library at Dowslane, where we're looking at significant renovations to that space that will encompass the current library and the computer room that is going to create a phenomenal library and two PLTW spaces. So as I said before, we're looking at this work kicking off next summer, the summer of '22. However, we have to think about where we are in a process. So we're currently between the 30 and 60% design and cost estimating process, which is work that the committee is deeply involved in with our professional partners. We're anticipating that this spring, so we're looking at three months down the road, we are going to begin our process that will lead to bidding. So to come back to the one area of italics, enclosing the walkway to the gym is yet another one of those areas that Carol and Brian will come back to as we review the process and think about where we are and again, share the thinking related to that. So when we go through this all-important design process and looking at developing and gaining our estimates here, there's really important steps that we go through. First, there's some key benchmarks in this design process. When we look at 30% completion of design, 60% completion, and then 90% completion. And as we're going through that process, not only are we looking at finalizing details associated with the design, but we're monitoring the budget every step of the way. And in doing so, the committee is really challenging itself and leaning on our professional partners for some of their expertise and looking for opportunities to be creative to make sure that we're really maintaining the overall budget for this project. And mind you, we're looking at all of these items that I mentioned in both Phase One and Phase Two, fitting into that overall scope of $18.9 million. So in this process, there's different key elements that we've looked to do. And here, we're looking at value engineering or design modifications. So in doing so, we may consider different materials that could be more cost-effective but provide the same level of functionality that we are seeking in the initial design phases. We're also going to look at design efficiencies, different things that we can do within the design process that can reduce costs. We also contemplate, how can we go to other sources to purchase items? So we can look at outside bids, such as using purchasing cooperatives and state contracts that the district is a part of. We can compare pricing that we get through bids. And by doing so, we may be able to find some of the same materials or equipment at a lower cost than was being bid, because we're not dealing with the contractor's overhead that naturally gets built into those estimates that we receive. And in doing so, it creates another level of flexibility for the committee and the board in managing the overall cost of the project. And then finally, in an area that we hope that we don't really have to get to, but it might be a reality, is that we think about modifying the scale of the project. So we might want to hold off on certain aspects of a project until we get down to the end of the process to see where we stand as far as that overall $18.9 million budget. And some of those examples are those that I referenced before that were in italics, such as the shed, paving the basketball court over at Dow's. So now Carol, and I believe Brian will join you in walking through some of the details related to the work that I outlined. So Carol?
So thank you. So obviously, I'm the keeper of the numbers, so I start in with the numbers. And so, you know, what I first want to point out is that the pre-bond projection, as Dr. Harrison mentioned, those were done about two years ago. When we met to do those, we had, you know, obviously, all of the scope of work. We grouped it. Triton did some cost estimates for us, but you have to keep in mind, there's a lot of decisions that get made after that. So those were, you know, pre-bond hearing, how much were we going to go out for? And not everything was detailed at that point. If you remember my presentations from the past, we really couldn't go into a lot of design detail prior to the vote. You can't only spend so much money prior to the vote that you're even going to do this. So we're a little limited with that. And, you know, I'll give an example of that. So like, for example, the Campus Learning Pavilion, you know, we put a square footage number down for a building that we knew was going to store athletic equipment. We didn't know we were going to add a classroom. We didn't know, you know, maybe we would put a nice roof on that. But in the Irvington way, we met with committees along the way as we designed the project and enhanced the original idea. And so now we're going to have a beautiful building that's going to serve the same purposes, but also, you know, be a part of our school district that we can be proud of. So yes, it's going to cost more than we originally estimated. So that's an example there. The boiler was pretty much on target with our estimates, so that's a positive. The Dowslane renovation and outdoor restroom is also slightly over budget. So right now, you know, we are looking at some negative numbers to our first, for our first base, to our pre-bond projections. As you can tell, just so I make sure you understand that the cost numbers are in green. That means that's an actual number. The blue numbers are bids. So those numbers we've received actual bids on, and that's what we'll be recommending to be awarding. And estimates are still something that we haven't gone to. But those numbers are pretty accurate, because I will tell you that those numbers are based off of state contracts and purchasing cooperatives that we just mentioned as one of our strategies. So there is one component there of installation that we still have to bid out. So there's a piece of that. So when you think about the budget too and the pre-bond numbers, you know, each project has this projection that we had. That doesn't mean we can't move money from one project to another. So this is where, you know, there's going to be some play. When one project is over, another project might be under. And you're going to see that especially a little bit more in Phase Two. So it's not like, you know, you have to stay within the one line. Obviously, it would be ideal if every single project ended up positive and we had money left over. We could even add some things. So that's not really happening at this point. How did we group these projects? And you see them together, and we might have mentioned this before, but the middle school, the CMS renovations and the Campus Learning Pavilion, they were bid as one project. They are two different SED codes, but we bid them as one project to try to get slightly better numbers, because sometimes a contractor will bid a lower price on something where he has to do a lot less staging and things like that. So that was bid together. The Dowslane renovation and the outdoor restroom project were also bid together. The actual outdoor restroom, the actual unit, will be bought also on, through a purchasing cooperative. But the work to put the utilities underneath, that will be done as part of this project. So there's some coordination. And if we're paving and redoing the parking lot, that's the appropriate time to do this anyway, because it's all tied together. So part of what we're doing is grouping things that make sense together and also to try to solicit proper bids and get as best a project as we can. So that's really for.
Carol, I just jump in for a second to give the trustees a little more color. So given where the outdoor restroom is being located, the lines for that will cut through the parking lot. So that project being done now, before we repave the parking lot of Dow's, was important to group it together and coordinate it so that we weren't going to then have to dig up a brand-new parking lot to then install the bathroom. So, you know, these are the coordination pieces that have gone into looking at when certain projects are done and how they're grouped together just from a standpoint of location and the needs of the different projects.
Right. And as far as the actual purchase of the unit that we can get on state contract, but the work of installing it has to be bid. So there's, you know, a lot of laws that govern how we go about doing this. So we are making sure we are staying abreast of all that and not, you know, flouting anything. I also will mention, just for those that might not know this, but, you know, when you sort of think about prices and costs, you know, every project that gets bid out is done at prevailing wage. Prevailing wage is, you know, typically, it's published wage. It's on, you can find it on the Office State Controller or purchasing any of the New York State purchasing sites. It's typically a little bit higher than, you know, what you might at home hire a contractor for. But that's what we are, we must follow. So those rates are all included in there, and all of our bid specs would say New York State prevailing wage for that particular trade. And then that is something we also will ensure occurs. So when we review the payment applications from the various contractors, they will submit payrolls that show the prevailing wage. So just, that's something that does add to your cost considerably in a government project. All right. So I think I covered most of Phase One. So what is not included in the estimate at the moment, as Dr. Harrison mentioned, was the shed. That was the only other piece of Phase One we have not included, and the paving of the basketball court. So as you can see, there's reasons for doing that, because right now, as we see, we're over budget. So we want to make sure that we are still kind of coming on track and that those are smaller things that we potentially could do at a later date, either if Phase Two comes in better, if we end up being more successful in Phase One. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit at the end in terms of allowances and some other projections. But let me just get to that last slide, which that has it on that. So going into the second slide on Phase Two. So Phase Two, you know, this is still a little bit early. These are estimates from the 30% to 60% drawings. These are some ideas that we have, but it's good to check in so that we know where we are, because, you know, we're asking the board now to award Phase One, which is over. I think you need to have a sense that where are we going to make up some ground in Phase Two? Or are we, or will we not? So the facility storage building will be a little bit under. So there, we had a higher estimate, and it looks like we're going to be okay. So we might have some money there. The high school LGA renovations that we mentioned look at this point to be a little bit over. But again, it's still early. We haven't finished everything in that design. The theater gym is significantly over at this point. And that is because we made a quick calculation error in our projections, in our pre-bond projections, which came to light after the fact on a square footage number that was incorrect. And that's something that we are going to have to work around. So that is a problem at this point that we're going to be working through. Nothing we can do about it at this point, but just try to figure out how to get past it. Main Street School renovations have come in so far much better. I think we had estimated higher. I know when we talked to Triton, originally, we said, we mentioned that that building was a 100-year-old building, and there could be significant issues in looking through the, after, you know, the engineers do a lot of their inspections and walkthroughs, things weren't probably in better shape than we felt. So right now, we're in good position. But yet, we're still looking not to do the walkway at this point, because that is a significant savings of approximately, you know, $250,000 to $300,000 that we're taking out at this moment. And then we're going to see where we land and then make determination where we want to go. There's also some discussion about whether or not the village will be doing any renovations and how that walkway would impact those renovations. So I think we're going to hold that, we're definitely holding that at this point to the side and seeing where we land after we finish construction on Phase One and when we get to a more of a 90% Phase Two design and estimates. And then lastly, the innovation suite, we are also slightly over at this point. But again, it's early. We picked some, you know, one of the things that I think is interesting is, you know, we have committees, right, that worked on all the design elements? And they want everything, and it's great, because there's great ideas. I was energized by the process going through it. And, you know, glass partitions and cool ceiling things. And, you know, I was sitting there, as I tend to do through all the meetings that I ever do in the district, is going, oh, I do the cash register thing in my mind, up, chink, 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 chink. And I love the ideas, but I also think about how much it's going to cost. So that kind of has happened here. There's been a little bit of scope creep, not a lot, I would say, but there has been some, and they're all good, good ideas. So we have to just decide now for Phase Two, what we're going to keep and what we're not. Making sure that we, again, emphasize keeping what's the most important things that we can afford in our budget. So when you look at the total project together, right now, we are about $257,000 over our projections. However, there's a couple of things that are interesting that are in there. So Phase One includes allowances of $207,000. What is an allowance? We build in, into the bid specs, in some of the contracts, we build in numbers for allowances, which basically are change orders or things that are going to happen in the field, an unseen condition or something that requires a change while you're building. And the reason you do that is because that keeps the project moving. You have allowances. They still have to be approved by the construction manager, the architect in the district, but that it keeps that project moving. Should they not be used, that money gets returned to us. For example, with the boiler, we built in $140,000 worth of allowances. I think we used $12,000. So that's why we ended up that project completely almost on budget. So that would be a good positive thing for us to end with no allowances in Phase One. In Phase Two, right now, the estimates that I'm showing have what we call construction contingency in them. It's a similar thing. It might be a number that we put in for allowances. Or right now, it's just, it's a number. It's a percentage of the total estimates that we're building in, because we're probably going to do those allowances. So that's cushion there. So that you, because I know the question might be, if we estimate and only where we are, are we willing any cushion for the future contingency? And so the answer is yes. The other thing is, we will know, we will have finished Phase One construction by September, prior to us going out to bid on Phase Two. And once we get to Phase Two, I think you will see the strategy that we used in Phase One was to take certain pieces and make them alternates. I think we talked about that a little bit. I'll explain that strategy. So you take certain portions of the project and say, this one, I can bid separately. We can then decide whether we want to award that alternate or not. If the price comes in great, and we can afford it, we award it. If not, we can hold it off, or we could choose to do that portion of the project at a later time. But it doesn't make us reject the entire bid. So that's a strategy we will be using in Phase Two. We did do it in Phase One. A lot of the alternate prices came in very favorable in Phase One. So we had actually gone out and done some, our own bidding just separately on some of those alternates, and the pricing for the contractors came in more favorable. So we are going to be recommending to award most of the alternates. So that's where we are. Now, if we still are ending up negative and we haven't been able to do the shed or the walkway or things that we really wanted to do, then the board can decide to integrate some budgetary funds to supplement our project expenses. And we still receive building aid. It's not that we wouldn't receive it if it's not part of the bond. The bond is just one source of funds, but we actually can do other funds. I've seen other districts even do some fundraising and have donations count toward a capital project. Ultimately, I didn't put this on the slide, but have the ability to tap into any reserves if we really wanted to. The other thing that I would point out is that when we originally made the estimates for the project, the borrowing costs, we used, I think, about a 4% number, which is way higher than it is now, the interest rates now. So we will have some opportunity likely in our budget in '22, '23 and beyond to potentially put some budgetary funds, if that's how the board wants to go toward maybe finishing anything that we couldn't do if we were overestimate. The other opportunity we could do is maybe go for a shorter period of term, and that would lower interest costs over the life of the project. So those will be some decisions that we don't need to make right now, but we will be presenting some options for you in the future.
And Carol, just could jump in for a second, just in terms of the, just so the board understands, the alternate process, we're really using it in two ways. One, you know, there are certain items that could be done on state contract. So we have them done as an alternate. So we get a bid and see if the contractor bid is better than the state contract. Then we would accept their alternate. And if it's not better, we can then use the state contract for a piece of it. And, you know, those are for items that we are looking to try to do one way or another. We also have alternates, you know, such as the Main Street Walkway, which may be bid as an alternate, but something that, so at least we have a bid on it, but something that at the end of the day, we may not go forward with due to the budgetary landscape or, you know, where we have priorities. You know, the Main Street Walkway is, I think, a little more complicated, you know, given also the village's plans around theater, which aren't yet really developed or known. But the intersection of those two is also something that we want to be mindful of. So the alternates are being, are used, you know, in two different ways.
Okay, if you can answer that slide, okay. So now, where are we at the moment? We are at this moment, right, at this point in time. So now, what, where are we at the moment? We are at this moment, right, at this point in time, recommending awarding the phase one. To the low bidders on Tuesday's uh, board meeting. Um, and I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on that whole process for the bids in a, in a second, but I'll just hold that for a second. Um, we will continue to monitor our, our phase one costs very closely. As you can see, we're going to be looking at the change orders versus allowances, see where we're landing. Um, making sure that, you know, we stay on budget. Uh, you know, I think we've done a really detailed job with our designs, so we should be in good place for the change orders. We are, as we've not mentioned numerous times for transparency, we are holding off on the shed. Uh, we are holding off on the paving, the basketball court at Dow's Lane. And then till the um, total projects expenses are known, and then we'll make some decisions there. In the future, as Dr. Harrison mentioned, and I think Brian, we're going to be continuing to look at our phase two designs for some savings. Seeing where we can, where we can um. Make some changes. Those plans are not at SED yet, so we're, we're not locked into anything. We, as we will, as we do design them and as we look to bid them out next fall. Uh, we will be looking to make parts of those projects alternates as, as Brian was just talking about. And finally, we'll be looking to maintain any adjustments to the projects as we needed, but as the building and grounds talked about. Buildings and grounds committee keeps in their mind, we always, always focusing on quality and safety. That's what we were looking on. You know, there's a lot of things we would like to have, but those are the things we absolutely need. And when we make our decisions. You know, we, we have to be ca- we, we think about, I always think about the phrase penny wise, pound foolish. If you do something to cut now. Are you going to be costing yourself a lot more in the future? And tha- that's something we have to think about. I, I think about my own homeschool district where they, they, they. Uh, you know, a district that had a in incredible football team. And they built a, a new high school and they, they didn't do a proper football field. Didn't even have enough room for the uh, pu- posts to put in on the track that that was enclosed in the field. It was incredible. They cut these corners at the very end to make the money fit. And that football team had to pla- uh, go always play at the middle school. So you know, things like that that happen. Uh, you know, y- you may just have to forego some things, but still maintain the quality and the safety of what you're doing. So those are the decisions, making things that we. That we focus on while we're making our decisions in the committee. Um, so if you go to the next process slide, I'll just talk a little about the bid process. If you go to that slide.
Slide.
Chris, one more slide. Okay, thank you. Um, so. The um, the big process is that basically, once we have our SED approvals of our designs. The um, the big documents, the final big documents are prepared. For the most part, they are the same documents that have gone to SED, but there's, we just now add. The conditions for insurance and all those other types of things that we need. We publish those bids on um, through the newspaper and through a, a, a website called Ref Plans. Which is where we house all the documents. Everything is pretty much done electronically at this point. They also have to pay a down payment on taking the specs, so we know who's bidding, who's coming probably. Um, we conduct a walkthrough where the architect is able to and the, and Triton are able to. Answer questions, show the different buildings, show the scope, so that the, the bidders have an idea of what it is they're bidding on. They're not just doing that in a vacuum. Um, so that's, that's, you know, always a, a process that we do. This year it was interesting because we had to do it with masks and be careful and space apart. So. It was, it was interesting, but we, we did, we did do it. Then we open the bids in public. Um, this year we did it via Zoom. This is my second bid opening in Zoom. It's uh, a little bit hairy, but we got through it. And it was recorded, so anybody who needed to, to do it, it has to be a public process. Then you, what emerges from that process are your low bidders. Okay, and so the basically the, you know, the three lowest bidders, we make sure that we're looking at what, at everything, but we take the first three low bidders. Kind of put them on a spreadsheet, check that everything that they've done is is uh, matching, that they've gotten the bonds, they've gotten the insurance, the certificates, everything that's been asked for. And then Triton really goes through and and H two M go through the, look, meet with the low bidder. For every single contract that we had, there's five contracts for each of these projects. And make sure they understand the scope, that they know what they bid on. The worst thing that could happen, and I think we've seen this once before. Is where someone doesn't have any real clue what they bid on, they just did it. Um, and then they want to try to back away later. So they're beholden to this and so are we. So we really need to make sure. Um, and then finally, they did reference checks to make sure that, you know, there's been no reason why we should be rejecting them. Um, you know, once you, but then we make these recommendations. And as I just said, there, you, you know, you have to kind of go with the low bidder. That's the law unless there's a particular reason that's just that you can disqualify a bidder for. Um, a bidder can take themselves out of the bidding. They can say, oh, wait a minute, I made a mistake. Uh, that's not, you know. Um, that's not what I thought you had said. They can then um, rich, you know, uh, withdraw their bid. But otherwise, we basically have to take the low bidder. Um, and then the other option would be to just reject all the bids and start over. So if you really felt all of your bids were way too high and that was just way out of your budget, you could start the whole process over. Um, the reason we're not recommending that in this case is because. We have our professional partners who have told us that these bids are reasonable bids. In fact, they were originally estimating them to be a little bit higher than what we got in this phase. So when we did our ninety percent. Um, estimates, the estimates were higher than what these bids were. So we, we, even though they're higher than our prod, our projections, our original projections. They were lower than our ninety percent estimates. If that makes any sense. So that's um, well, why we're now recommending to continue and not reject all the bids. Um, just to give you a little more information on the bids. We had um. We had, Chris, the next slide. We had six bids for the general construction for Dow's and also six for the middle school. So that the general construction is the main contractor who does, who coordinates uh, most of the construction work. Um, but then you have specific contracts that the law requires us to use. We can't use one contract to do everything. Even though they could potentially hire subs to do all these things, we are beholden to the Wicks Law. So every single contractor has to be different. So site work, um, we had eleven bids for Dow's and, but yet only four for the middle school, which is a little bit of a um, different project. We had um, six bids each for the uh, HVAC to put the air conditioning systems in. Uh, and the same uh, vendor won both bids. Plumbing, we had um, five bids and six bids, and then for electrical, we had four and five. And those two were the same. And I will say that between TWP and Southeast, they both were very close for both projects. It almost could have been one of them, be both of them. Um, but uh, it just didn't work out that way. So sometimes people will bid on both and hope to win both. But then they're not, they just didn't win it. So some of them were very s- uh, similar in price and others were not. So it was a, it was kind of a little bit all over the map. But these are the, the wit, the bidders that we are going to be recommending on Tuesday for the board event to um, to uh, award the contracts for. And with that, I'm kind of done.
Yeah, so um, Ryan, before we move along, um. Yeah, are there any points that you want to make before I bring the slideshow down so we can be able to see each other a little more effectively?
Yeah, I, I, I think you can uh, bring the slideshow down. Uh, yeah, I think uh, you know, at this point, in a minute, we'll go to the trustees for. For questions. I, I do just want to point out that we're joined tonight by our professional partners. We have. Uh, Kevin Sawyer from. Excuse me, from Triton, uh, who functions as, you know, our owner. Uh, rep and he's separate from the architects. And we have Severio, who's joining us from H two M, uh, who's the, the lead on the project at this point. So to the extent there are, you know, particular technical questions or questions that. Uh, Carol or others can't answer, they're here to, to help out and they've been, you know, instrumental in the last uh. Couple months in helping with the estimates, the bid process and also looking at the projects holistically. And you know, you know, I think the bottom line at this point is, you know, if you were to add everything together, at this point, we're tracking about. Uh, you know, lower two hundred thousand over. But we have six hundred thousand in contingencies that are built into the project still, which we don't know. Uh, where that will land. So while we're tracking somewhat over right now, those aren't fixed numbers since we still have. The allowances in phase one and the contingencies in phase two. So we'll have to see how things develop as both phase one is done. As we get the bids for then the ultimate bids for phase two and see where we're at. But you know, to echo what Carol said, i- i- the, you know, overarching principle that we've been working with as a committee. Is that we want to do the projects right, but you know, what does right mean? I think I've probably said enough times. In a meeting that, you know, we want a good, solid Chevy. We don't need a Cadillac necessarily. So, but at the same time, if we get to a point where we are squeezed on funds, we're going to have to come back and have. A further discussion about projects and scope and. And are there areas that we want to eliminate or defer because. I don't want to be a position where we just try to build stuff, uh, to get stuff built, but it's not going to be done in a quality way. Or in a way that's going to make sense for us. So you know, that's a conversation that may happen. Down the road, depending on where things are at, if we want to look to uh, for, you know, if we need to change the scope in order to. Get projects done and as Carl said, that may, you know, you know, for an example, we may have a project that's going to cost seven hundred thousand and we only have. Four hundred thousand left in the budget at that point. And the question will be, you know, what do we do at that point? It may be that we have. Interest savings down the road that we could then use to apply to it. Maybe that it's a project. That we decide to forego and look to do separately at a different time. But those are conversations that we'll have along the way. But uh, you know, the plan is at this point to have the phase one construction done over the summer. And then move on to phase two. You, phase one is a, is more of the safety, security. Uh, infrastructure piece uh, is, is a lot that's being addressed in phase one. Phase two has some of that, but also has, you know, some of the additional stuff like the libraries and so forth. So. Uh, wi- with that, uh.
Brian, I just, Brian, I just wanted to also now, as we have Brian Paddock and Cole Podolsky from H two M, also they are listed as attendees, but they are also our professional partners. So I just didn't want to forget them. They've been integral to this process.
Thank you. So uh, are there questions amongst the trustees at this point in terms of the presentation?
Go start with the people who aren't on the committee?
Yeah, I, I thought I'd start with the trustees who aren't on the committee and then go from there. Thank you, Michael. Beth, go ahead.
I forget, forgive me for not understanding this piece of it, but I would appreciate a further explanation. So when we look at phase one and we look at where. There are bids and differences in the bid versus the cost. And then we look at phase two, how do we make sure that decisions made in phase one don't adversely. Impact our ability to make better decisions for phase two. I don't know if I need to explain my question further. Um, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I guess the, the, the question is in terms of, I'm not sure what you meant by better decisions. I mean, at, at this point.
Sorry, uh, adjusted decisions.
So at, at this point, we're, the, the phase wa- phase one, we have bid, so we have a. Pretty good understanding of the costs for phase one. And this is, uh, you know, so that mu- that's money that's going to get spent uh, over the next uh, nine months. So, you know, so the, the issue is, you know, we have, that's why we have the phase two piece up there so we can see. Uh, you know, both. Uh, pieces with the cost. So right now, based on where we are in the design. Again, th- those are the, the phase two estimates and they are just that right now, estimates and they'll get refined. Uh, over the next three to six months as uh, the designs get refined and the estimates then get done in those additional designs.
So decisions that are made concerning phase one have more of an impact on decisions made in phase two, just by nature, I guess, of timing.
Yeah, well, I mean, the, the idea is that we've uh, looked at all the projects and. And come up with the estimates for each piece, so we understand. Uh, where, I mean, obviously if phase one came in at, you know, twelve billion dollars, that would be a real problem because then we'd have. Uh, nowhere near the funds to do phase two. At this point, looking at phase one, phase two, uh, you know, we're relatively close from a budget standpoint. Uh, on, on, on both. And that's, but that's why we've always had. A running budget for the entire project and not just phase one, uh, and then move forward. Because they, they're obviously all linked together because anything that we do, any dollar spent in phase one is a dollar that's not going to be available in phase two. But based on where we are on the designs at this point and the estimates, you know, as you see, we're. We're over, but not uh, dramatically over at this point. But, you know, to be uh, you know, transparent that. You know, it's construction, anything can happen. We think we would anticipate the contingencies and built-in allowances and, and we've estimated well. Uh, on, on this round, but it may be that we get to the point with phase two and where we are from a dollar standpoint and. Estimates that we come back and say, here's where the estimates are and we have to make a decision. About something that we have to take off the table, given where we're at. So I don't want. And people think that this may not change, but at the same time, looking at the phase one work. You know, that was work that was, that was all seen as necessary work. It's. Uh, a lot of safety, security and infrastructure work that needs to get done. So uh, that's why it was also grouped up in front to get that work done because then Dow's Lane needs a new roof. Uh, you know, things like that need to happen. So to get uh, that stuff done, first to make sure we get that done, that was also a. Uh, uh, some of the thought process in the committee.
Yeah, Brian, I would just add to that, that um, that you were just trying to say to it, that all, mo- almost all of the safety and securities are in phase one, with the exception of the high school vestibule. Which is obviously, we're doing more than just the high school vestibule since we decided to change the entrance, but other than, that's why it's in phase two. But eh, everything else is in phase one in terms of building the enclosures that we've talked to the community about, about changing the vestibule at Dow's and that. Um, at the middle school. So those, those key things and a, a lot of the solar film that we need at the middle school, which is where it was the most. Uh, urgent and the LGA are, um, I'm sorry, the CMS, those areas where we, the windows were wide open. Those are the key things that we did say we were going to do. And then the infrastructure pieces, the roof, the Dow's gym, which is absolutely needing a new floor. So those things are addressed. Um, that doesn't mean that, you know, phase two doesn't have some truly necessary things. It does, but it does have a little bit more leeway for decisions. Okay, and I, and I think that's how, when we made our decisions on how to face things, we spent a long time, the buildings and grounds committee spent a long time deciding how to face things. We had a lot of discussion on. On what to do and how to do that so that we could, if we found ourselves in a situation like we are, where we're slightly over now. Um, that we would be having tackling the, 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 the most important things first. To answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, did you have a question?
Uh, just one. Um, first, I proceed as always, uh, with the thank you to the B and G committee for doing this arduous work. Really appreciate it. Certainly depend on you guys. So thank you. Uh, second is more of a question, not for me, but for the public, um, just to understand this process. Uh, Carol, could you just in, in brief, um, review the di- the ways in which the process is different? In uh, undergoing construction project of this size from a public perspective versus private. Uh, you know, you know, as opposed to people doing construction wherever, you know, the SED requirements, those different kinds of things that uh, we run into here. As a school district that others might not. Uh, can you just clarify those things for anybody who might be listening out there?
Sure, um, and this, I think. Might, I might rely on um, Severio a little bit also to add some color here, but. So you know, obviously, we don't go to the, our local building department in Irvington to get a permit. We need to go to, through SED, so the state education department. And, and they have mi- what probably way more stringent requirements than you would as a homeowner. They look at the capacity of the building, they look at the egress for students, they look at, and staff, they look at. You know, your building code, your fire code, they look at all those pieces. So there, so there are pieces that we have to design. In a, in a school building that are different than you would as a homeowner. So there's like a lo- much a lower level of risk that we, you might, you might take a higher level of risk when you're home, but you don't in a school building. So there's a lot of code requirements that we are beholding to. Um, and that also creates, you know, a lot, long, like your approval process and the design process and then an approval process. I talked a little about prevailing wage. That's something that obviously drives the cost. There are people who believe the Wicks Law and it drives the cost. The Wicks Law is where you saw, you saw that we had G, C, H, E, P, those are the different contracts. Um, if some people think if one contractor were to do it all and create subs, they might be able to do it cheaper and some of those. Subco- contractors could probably do their own plumbing. They had, may have staff, you know, people on staff to do that. But they had, but we with a, with the Wicks Law, we have to have a separate contractor through the plumbing and a separate contractor through the electrical. That tends to add to the cost and that might be something Kevin might want to um, add, add some color on. So those are the things that come to my mind um, immediately, but um. You know, those are key things, but, but ultimately, what we're going to get is something that's going to be a product that does protect our students and staff, keeps us safe. Uh, so I do believe a lot of the laws are, are good. Um. Um sometimes frustrating maybe, and I you know, I might actually question things as we go through, like, why did we have to do that? I mean, I'm a practical person, right? So I get a little annoyed sometimes, but I know the end result that is that the state has our best interests at mind.
Also, architects can't draw plans until you get approval, right? There's things
Right. So again, when I talked about initially our projections, you know, we could not, we only could get some sketches in the beginning that we used to, to, you know, talk to the community about. And um and when we gave those sketches to the uh to try into cost estimate, as I said, the facilities, the 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 campus learning pavilion was a X thousand square foot building. And you know, that's what they costed out. We really didn't talk about the fact that we were gonna add that nice outdoor classroom where we were gonna put a fancier roof that would match then the design of the middle school. Looking back, should we have potentially, I probably should have said, you know, let's add a little more. This is Irvington. We're not just gonna wanna put up a plain, plain, plain Jane, plain Jane vanilla building. Sorry, Jane. But um the, you know, maybe I should have thought through that a little bit more and and added some extra cost cushion there. You live and learn on that. So the next time we do this, I'll I'll have a little bit of a better sense for that. But um but that's okay. And then the other thing is David, that we used a very collaborative process. So when you do a home project, it's you, maybe your spouse, maybe you might ask a kid or something, but it's you, right? We asked teachers, we asked students, we asked community members, we had them all participate in our process. That ends up with some scope creep. I talked a little bit about that. Good or bad, I you know, I think most of it was good. Honestly, I thought there was some really cool suggestions that were made. Um you'll see a lot more of that in probably in phase two than you'll see in phase one, where we have, you know, great ideas for our library spaces um come come into play, less so in, you know, putting an air conditioning system. We didn't certainly ask the community about a boiler, but there were definitely pieces that we did. It slowed us down a little bit here and there, but you know, it was, it was a great process. So um you got a good result. I don't know if Kevin or or Savaria wanna add anything to what I just said, but I think probably that hit the highlights of that question.
Yeah, I would just, I would just add that, as Carol had mentioned, obviously, you have the Wicks law and you have prevailing wage, which are things that typically do raise the costs. Uh there are other things like bonds and insurances that are also included in the project manual. And those bonds or insurances are to protect the district. That if a contractor went belly up or went default in the contract, you have an insurance policy in place that at no additional cost to the district, that project gets completed by a bonding company. But that comes with a cost. It's it's a good insurance policy and a good way to be able to protect the district, but that's something that you may not have when you look at something that you would do on the private side. As well as the level of insurance, the insurance limits that your attorneys have put in the general conditions are put there to safeguard the district, right? They wanna make sure that each one of these contractors has enough insurance that if God forbid, something happens during the construction or worker gets hurt, some damage is done to the building, there's an insurance policy that also protects the district. And it's put there in place to specifically to protect the public's money. When we are spending as a public agency like school districts are, when you're utilizing public money, these additional safeguards are put into place by the New York State Competitive Bidding Law to make sure that that money is spent properly and protected. Unfortunately, it comes with a price tag. So yes, it costs more to do that type of work in the public arena than it does in the private arena. And as Carol had mentioned, the Wicks law, think about it, if you're doing a renovation to your home, you may have one contract to come in. He's gonna do the roof, the kitchen and the bathroom. We would have to have three different contractors. You'd have to have a general contractor, a plumbing contractor and an electrical contractor. Each one of them carrying the same insurance limits, the same bonds that we would ask them to do. So if any one of those contractors went to fault, the district is protected. So as it provides this additional protection, it comes with additional cost. But those are some of the other items that are put into safeguard the district and safeguard public money.
Thank you, Savaria. I mean, I I kind of obviously know about the bonds and stuff, but to me, that's just so routine. I don't even think to answer that. But yes, that's a it is an extra cost that that does occur with just about everything we do in the school district. We ask for insurance, we ask for bonds, we ask for well, specifically public works projects, we ask for bonds.
Erin, did you have a question?
I did. Um and Carol, thanks for the presentations. Helpful. Um I when we're selecting the vendors, I know we go to the lowest bidder. Do we also get references?
Yes, Kevin, would you talk to that process a little bit? I I did mention that we do reference checks, but let's let Kevin talk about that.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Uh thank you and good evening, everybody. Yeah, so um after the bids are opened, uh we take collectively, the collective, we take those bids uh and then we start to evaluate each individual contractor for various things. Uh we check to make sure that the actual paperwork that they submitted as part of their bid is accurate uh and meets the requirements uh first and foremost. Uh and then secondly, we start doing our due diligence. So that includes a number of different things. First, we meet in what we call a scope review with the school district as well as the architect engineers to evaluate the contractor and to make sure that they have in fact thought about all the aspects of your project, all the logistics, had to understand the timeline, the work has to be done. To understand whether the buildings are occupied or not, how we're gonna access them, how we're gonna make sure that the school district can continue to operate while we're doing the construction and then the financing aspect of it. Uh so we'll, we will check their bonds to make sure they meet the strengths required. Uh we will check to make sure that they're contracted, that that does this work in the public market and is and has done projects of similar size and scope. Uh we'll check there, whether or not, we'll check uh Department of Labor to see if they have any debarments or if they have any violations that we should be aware of. Uh we'll check their their financial statements to make sure that they have enough cash flow to get through the project month to month, because you, you know, that's a thirty day pay cycle. And if you have a two million dollar project, for instance, and you're going just summer, that means that they gotta come up with a million dollars overhead a month that they have to be able to cover. So do they have, we'll check to see if they've got, you know, uh the credit line with the bank. Uh we'll check the um their their financial ratings from last year. We'll check and see how many projects that they're currently working on. Uh and then we will uh actually call references. So we uh what's good about the these, this particular industry is that um you will know a lot of the contractors because they tend to bid projects over and over and over again, over the years. Uh and so you know their reputation. Some of them are a little bit stronger, some of them are a little bit weaker and, you know, and and part of our job uh because Triton Construction will have a onsite, a full-time person uh on your projects while this is all taking place is to make sure that we, that we, that they have the tools that they need and that we understand what they, what their weaknesses and strengths are so that we can help them, because you wanna help them succeed, right? So we can help them get to the, get to the finish line and finish the project in a, in a, in a very good quality way. And then after we do all that, uh we will make a recommendation, as Carol had indicated before, of the contractors um based on their abilities as well as have these discussions about alternates and other things like this, which uh which do require uh more the committee um to make those decisions than us. Uh we will evaluate them each uh for their pros and cons and bring that to the team uh and then let you guys make um sound um in uh decisions.
You know, one other quick thing that I just thought of, um David, to answer your, one more piece to answer your question. All of this work is getting done in the summer for the most part. And that is something that, again, is different than maybe a home project where you could spread things out. The contractor agrees in the bid specs to to do the project, completed by September first generally, right? So we obviously have kids coming back, which means that everything has to get compressed into eight weeks, generally, eight to nine weeks. And that means they sometimes have to think about paying overtime double time if they, if they're running late, if materials don't come in. If materials don't come in, they still have to do the project. Like, that's not not my, not my problem, right? That's their problem. Um and that's what Triton will also be monitoring and and along with H two M, they go through construction management. So that is some a piece that, you know, you might have more flexibility on a time when you're doing a home project than you do in a, in a school project. So
I like to elaborate on that schedule timeline just a little bit so that I, it's clear for everybody who's on this call. The the first project that will start in construction, assuming that the board decides to move forward with the approvals would be the um the pavilion, the learning pavilion. We're hoping to start that in February. Uh and then we're going to, then the balance of the projects that we discussed earlier are all summer projects that will all end by, they will all end by September one. Okay.
But keep in mind, Kevin, we still have requirements that they need to work after school hours. They have to work in this time because they can't be disruptive for noise. So there's also requirements within that, starting in February or March, that we would need to that they need to adhere to and all of that's in those specifications. So just all contributing to the cost.
Carol, I would say, Carol, to further extend uh the points that have been made, I think that one example is is looking at um the particular vendors that have been identified as the lowest responsible bidders. And in doing so, Land Tech uh is a firm that did work in the district with the last capital project. And um because of the experiences that that we had with them along the way, there was very close conversations that were had to ensure responsibility, management and oversight, understanding of the scope. And um because of that process that was led by um Kevin and his team at at his firm, that we are able to to recommend Land Tech as a responsible bid um and feel uh comfortable that they're gonna do a quality job here for us.
And to further add to that, Chris, um you know, with with Triton on 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 with their boots on the ground is what how I call that, with their construction manager on the ground. If if a vendor, if a contractor does not have the proper personnel on the site, which is what happened to us for the previous project, um they were relying on their subs to do a lot of that. Um we can, we, there's provisions for us to find them. There are provisions for us to hold them to their contract. So that is something that um but that since we're aware of of a past problem with that, that we will be completely aware of and manage now. Uh we did not have the the services of construction manager. We did have a clerk of the works, but there's, it's not the same power, I would say, than than what we have with with uh with Triton Construction um and with H two M. So it's it's um it's a definitely a more favorable place that we're gonna be in to start the project than we were with the other project, which was a much slower, lower scope. So we didn't have all those resources to us.
So was there a big disparity between our lowest bidders and the next bidder? Just as I'm hearing that there may have been some concern with some of those lower bidders and we got comfortable, we managed to get ourselves comfortable. Is it worth, was it, did we determine it was worth the risk, given where the next bid came in and
Don't have a choice, Erin. You have to go with the low bidder unless you could disqualify them. You you absolutely have to go with the low bidder unless you can disqualify them.
So then you couldn't disqualify them because of a pat, because of prior poor performance.
Right, but it would have to be something that would really meet the law in terms of disqualification. And I, yeah. And so like, even if they were a thousand dollars away, you would have to go through a process where you, you know, it it's a lengthy process to show why that vendor couldn't uh meet the 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 requirement and it's not easy to do that. So you know, again, I don't think the next bid was even that close for that that contract to even go through that, but
Okay, but but so in other words, it sounds like we built in um bells and whistles within the contract to sort of keep them on task, you know, should they go over budget for some reason that becomes their does that become their responsibility ultimately? Like, how does that work?
No, they're they're beholden to the price that they paid it. And and okay, and originally with Land Tech, the first time, that was what we paid them. We only paid them what they bid. Okay, it was their subs that was the the problem that sued them, not not us. It did, we we used our, they, we paid them what we were supposed to pay them. And just for your reference, it was about a sixty thousand dollar difference.
And if I could just say, we specifically asked them certain questions that identified some of the issues that you had in the previous job with them as far as who was managing the project, who their project manager was, were they going to be using subs? They indicated, uh they they provided the answers that, no, all of the work was going to be done in-house. So it alleviated our concern about some of the issues that were brought up in the previous project that they had done. But as Carol had mentioned, uh you are required in the New York State Competitive Bidding Law to select the lowest qualified bidder, even if it's a dollar difference. And unless you can disqualify that contractor, and unfortunately, the laws are not set up all the time to protect the owner that to protect the contractors. And so you'd have to go through a separate Article seventy-eight just to deem a contractor uh not, um you know, um to dismiss them from that, right? You'd have to deem them that they're not responsible to do that work. And unfortunately, Lantic is a large company that does a lot of educational uh school district work and has a very good reputation. Unfortunately, they had an issue prior, but we felt comfortable after reviewing and going through all of those things with them that they would not be making uh the same mistake they made the first time.
I will, I will also add just quickly that they have done, they did do a very, really good job on the field itself. It was port, a portion of the other part of the project, the Eastfield project, that they just didn't pay attention to the scope of that project and and that was where the issues lie. They also do, they they have different arms to their company and they have also done a really good job, you know, um fixing anything that has happened since then. They had, they do a good job with our land, uh our field maintenance and our uh our our uh grass maintenance, you know, all that. So they're they're not, you know, a really bad company. I think they they took this job because they wanted that field and did not pay attention to what else they bid on in terms of that second portion of the project, because they wanted to showcase the field work that they do, the turf field, which they did do a really good job on. And they were on time. If you recall, they were on time for that project. We opened school with that field being done. So you know, that's why it is so important that that we do these review of scope meetings, which we did do in this case um to really make sure that that, that that they understand the scope. And this is a different project, you know, they're repairing the site work for the CLP, for the bleachers. Um that's really what the scope is about, preparing the 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 site for that.
So they're really involved. It sounds like at the very beginning of the project, is that what site work generally tends to be work that's done sort of at the beginning? And then the general contractor is gonna come in and do the construction? Is that words? So you'll, we'll know right away if there's an issue for some reason.
Right, there may be some paving at the very end in terms of the sidewalks and things, but um so some of it might be toward the end, but yeah, generally, you're right.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Carol. Oh, I had one other question. Um and I appreciate that response. That was really thorough and helpful to understand the process. The shed that we're putting on hold, and forgive me because I don't remember where we said that was going to be, but have we looked at the facility storage building as perhaps something to expand upon to accommodate whatever we were gonna put in the shed? I don't know if that would make it cheaper. Um but just as you're talking about, like, you know, you know, not not cutting ourselves off that something becomes more expensive. I'm just curious if that's an option.
That, I'll I'll answer that also, just to say that, you know, when we we look at this facility storage building, we've looked at the square footage of what we need to fit what Gary has identified as equipment that needs to go in there. Um so potentially, no, but once it's built and we put stuff in there, maybe that could be a solution. You know, um the the shed at Dowslane what is gonna, was potentially slated to go behind the district office. It already was somewhat controversial with the location anyway, if you recall during the community meeting. So if it's, if it somewhat realizes that we can't, that we can't store all of our equipment and we need a shed, we we reopen that discussion. It may well be that we're we're fine and we can, between the the two new buildings that we can store everything we need. So I think that's also part of our decision-making and holding off right now, because we maybe have alternators. First, wanna add to that?
Yeah, but also, Erin, just to clarify, the shed would be at Dow's where the
Yeah.
Buildings up at the campus.
Right.
And there is a need
For storage.
Store equipment at Dow's. Otherwise, you'd also have to deal with the transport of it back and forth, which probably wouldn't be particularly efficient. So but uh the idea is that uh given that it's at least something that is a lesser need, given that we have at least some existing storage at Dow's, it would be uh dressed at the end.
And it sounds like we wouldn't be willing to move it back and forth if that's what we needed to do versus spending a hundred thousand dollars if we have the ability to do it.
The facilities building until it's built, you know, right now, it's really tight for storage based on what we think the needs are and given uh where where that's being built and and having to bu- build into a hillside, it's probably to expand, it starts to get expensive. So I I don't think we'd look to expand the facilities building, uh if anything, once it's built and if we're able to uh get more efficiency in the storage there, you know, that's something we'd look at. You know, one of the things that we've looked at, you know, in terms of when we're starting to talk about value engineering is could could we make the facilities building even a little smaller? And in working with uh the architects and Gary in terms of the amount of storage need, we came back that, no, you know, we're really at the bare minimum for our storage needs in that building. So uh you know, we want to even try to make it smaller. Uh and that seems to be not a viable option to then get the utility we need from it. Uh, and that seems to be not a viable option to then get the utility we need from it. But uh, to make it bigger, I think you'd start to spend more to make it bigger than you would cost uh, for the shed, given that the shed is probably going to be a. Uh, you know, a, an, an easier construction project or maybe, or, or than the uh, facilities building.
Thank you. And can I ask one more question? Kelly mentioned that the interest rate is probably going to come in lower than the four percent we budgeted. And I apologize if you quoted the amount, how much savings do you anticipate me, we may experience from that lower rate?
Um, at this point, I anticipate probably about a hundred thousand dollars to what we budgeted for interest. So right now. Uh, we have about one point two million of, 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 a bond payment or principal and interest payment every year of one point two million that's coming off the books in that year twenty-two, twenty-three. That is um, the amount we were using to base the principal and interest off for an eighteen point nine million dollar bond at like. Four percent over twenty years. So now the rates are like one point three five, one point four. And even if we added a cushion to be one point six, which is what our fiscal advisor told us to use at the moment. That would result in, in a principal and interest payment of about one point one nine. So we, and we, we do have some options here. And, and that would be on a recurring basis every year. So we can, we can decide how we want to do this. Yeah, we have options. Um, which is a good place to be. Obviously, you're going to hear me talk next Tuesday about the long-range plan and how. The, the interest rate will also hurt us on a revenue side because we're not getting interest income. So. There's, there's pluses and minuses with that. So I don't want to count all that money right now, but um, as we go to bond, we'll, we'll think about it. But it's definitely a positive because it's a long-term. A bond that we're going to rate, we're going to take advantage of. And hopefully the interest rates will recover once we've done the bond so that we can get revenue for the budget on the other side. So. Another conversation of the day.
Thank you. I'm done.
Uh, Janie, do you have any questions? Uh, any other uh, questions?
Are you opening to?
Yes.
Other members? Uh, okay, uh, I wanted to just clarify since um, the community may be aware that there's um. An existing um, building that's used for storage of, of some equipment at Dow's Lane. Know that, you know, we talked at length earlier in the uh, bond development process about um. Uh, other, other things needing to be stored there that aren't currently stored, but um, I wondered what the status of that building was if um. So would we still have access at least to that building for the district's uh, use?
But we're talking about the modular, the modular behind, yeah. So our, obviously our intention is to get rid of that modular. It's, it's needs to be taken away. I've been delaying, you know, even the, it, it still meets the code. I mean, with the minimal code, we don't really have people going there other than the facilities people right now. All of the PTSD stuff has been moved out of the modular and is now in the school building. We have found room for that. So that part of it, there's no staff going in and out and we're just storing some basic um, equipment. And I know Gary's on the, on this, in this meeting as an attendee and um. And you know, he, right now he's still storing stuff in there. So we are going to have to get creative. We do not put a shed up. But I anticipate being able to put that shut up. I just don't know that we'll do it through this capital project. We may just do it through a budgetary allotment. Um, and we'll get the aid either way. So it's, it's, no, I'm sorry, we won't get aid on this either way. It's not an adable project. So whether we do this as a budgetary uh, piece at some point. Because of interest rate savings or some other one-time savings, which you're going to hear me talk about Tuesday um, as well. There's, there's going to be opportunities for us to figure out how to do this. If not, Gary's just going to have to be a magician and figure this out because um, we do want to get rid of the modular. I, I, you know, we, we made a commitment to the community that we need to get rid of that. So.
But it, it provides Gary with a little flexibility in the interim.
In the interim, right.
Out this decisions, I guess, for the question I was getting to.
Right. And while it's not ideal to move equipment back and forth to the campus, if that's something we have to do. You know, we, you know, lawn mowers aren't being used in, in this, in the winter, snowplows are. So we, you know, there are, there is some, some movement of, of items and we, we can do it. It's not ideal, but yes, we, you certainly can be creative if we have to.
Thank you. Um, the other, the other question I had was actually um. In talking about the um, was, was just a, a point of clarification on the outdoor classroom piece of the um. And forgive me, I'm blanking on the name of the building.
Campus Learning Pavilion.
Campus Learning Pavilion, which um, I guess the, the um. When you, when you talked about the different elements of the building um, earlier, I, I just wanted to remind everybody that I think that the. The addition of, of elements like the outdoor learning space actually made. Um, a portion of the building adable that wouldn't have been, is that the case or?
So more, we're hoping that that's the case. Um, we won't have that final decision until we submit the project, really. Um. And you know, we, they, they could still come back and, and say no, because we might have enough um, classroom space inside for the number of students that we have. I, I would say that it's, you know, maybe a thirty percent chance we will get aid and maybe not. It's one of those things where we don't know. If we have a bigger enrollment increase for some reason and we say we need space for art and that's what we use it for. It's going to be interesting. I think once it's built and we apply for the aid, we'll know better. Um, but um. You know, it's, it's, it'll be a little bit of a tough sell, but we'll see. Our aid rate is pretty low as it is. So I don't think that's really the deciding factor. I think the deciding factor for the committee, the B and G committee and the, the, the. The design committee for the campus learning pavilion was, how could we use this space for our students? How could we promote educational, outdoor educational art? Science, uh, other things. So I, I think we really weren't totally focusing on the aid. I mean, it would be great, it would be gravy. But I don't know that I would bank my total existence on that. So.
Understood. I, I only wanted to raise it to see what point it was at, at this point. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Great, thank you. Um. I just want to thank everyone. Uh, it's, it's a lot of, of uh. You know, projects on the table, both in phase one and phase two. And um, so I really thank everybody's efforts uh, in terms of. Our architects at H two M and, and our Triton, the construction partner and, and. Uh, this presentation, uh, Kristen Carroll is, is, is really quite excellent in terms of, I think. Putting out uh, where we're at. Uh, I think it's a lot to digest for people who haven't been sort of living with it to some degree. So. You know, I encourage everybody to, to take time over the coming days to. To sort of review it. Um. I guess, I just had, wanted to circle back to a couple of things that you did state pretty plainly, Carol. Um. One was that, you know, in terms of some of the overages, you mentioned that, you know, with the, the pavilion, that there's some additional excavation costs with the campus gym. There was a. Error with the square footage that increases the cost of putting AC. Um, so. Um, you know, those were unfortunate. Those are things that um. I think I am always concerned about as the late people on the committee that uh, you know, we, we really do count on. Our professional partners to, to identify that as we move forward with phase two. So the question is, the, right now you, we have it listed as sort of. The totality of the project being two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus over budget, but there are a certain number of projects that are on hold or, or will be cut. I just want to make sure I have them all. It's the, the paving of the basketball court and the district office steps. Uh, is one, the, the shed at Dow's Lane is another. Uh, the, the walkway at Main Street School is another. So that, that gets us to about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars that. Won't be spent on those unless that money's available at the end and it's possible to move forward. Are there any others that are on hold or cut?
I think that's really it. Um, I have to confirm whether or not I included the. Girls bathroom in the high school numbers. I have a feeling I might not have. I, I just kind of realized that earlier today, but um. But that, that, because that was permitted prior already. We were holding the permit and I might not have included that because we've been holding that permit from since the last project. And that's again, something we might have to use budgetary money for if we include it. Cause I just realized that was in the scope and we might not have been giving that to our professional partner. So. Something I, I might have to think about. Um, but that's really it. Um. You know, some of the other things that had come in. I come in through scope discussions, but we really weren't in the digital projections. So to say we're cutting them is really not the case because we didn't. We didn't have them in our projections. Yeah, right. So then we've just basically not included that. But um. Yeah, I think otherwise we're, we're okay. I mean, the idea is to be as transparent as possible and know that we're going to have to make some decisions going forward. But uh, that's why we're, we're having this meeting and.
Yeah, no, I think, I think you did a, a great job putting it out there. Uh, I just wanted to put a little bit more uh. Meet on the term value engineering. Uh, maybe, uh, I don't know, Savaria would like to sort of answer, what are some? Big examples of how we look to, to uh, avoid certain costs with the, what we're terming value engineering?
Sure, uh, specifically in the phase two projects, we looked at substituting uh, materials, right? Typically, when you, when you have your initial design intent, your initial design thoughts about a project, you may incorporate of materials that have been. That, that, that you get a rough number for. So for instance, let's talk about ceiling tiles, right? You, you often have a, a vision of what you think the ceiling in the library. Is going to look like. So you put a number to that, but then as you get through the design process and you do more research. In materials and manufacturers that are available, you found products that are of similar uh, style, similar. Design intent, but come at a cheaper cost or less expensive cost. So we would look to sort of substitute those types of items. Uh, um, paving, for instance, we, we looked at in some areas of reducing the binder course, which is a course. Of asphalt that is directly below the wearing course. So in areas that are not considered high traffic. Instead of having a two-inch binder course, we looked at reducing that down to an inch and a half. It may not sound like a lot. But when you have a large area of paving that you are doing, uh, you know, it adds up quickly in the amount of tonnage that you bring as asphalt to the site. However, we kept in mind that in the areas where bus traffic is or where high-traffic patterns for parents to drop off. The children are, we did not look to reduce the thickness of that wearing cost. Uh, very much within industry standard is inch and a half wearing cost, inch and a half binder cost. Originally, we talked about two inches and one and a half inches. So we went back to look at, is there a way to. Uh, provide the same design intent, the same quality, the same longevity of the materials. But utilizing a different resource. And so that's what we would do for an instance like that. We also looked at, for instance, value engineering was. Something as simple as routing conduit and piping through the building. Sometimes when you initially lay out your design. You say, oh, I'm going to, you know, go this straight line to get my power out to the pavilion. But then you realize that, you know, there's an alternate way that I could run that power. That means that I don't have to take down some ceilings. I don't have to do some other work. So we, we think of that as we're going through and that gets developed during the thirty, sixty, ninety phase. Thus the reason why the construction manager Triton also does its cost estimates. So as we're, we refining that scope, we're looking at all of those items as we do it. Sometime manufacturers of mechanical core, mechanical equipment, right? The, the air conditioning that we talked about that we're going to be including in the gymnasium. We had originally thought about specifying a certain manufacturer. We've researched and called other manufacturers. That have similar same products that produce the same quantity, the same CFM, the same airflow, all of those things, but at a less expensive cost. So. We look at manufacturers, we look at materials, we look at all types of things that don't sacrifice the design intent. But just are more economical in the design process. So we've looked at all those and we'll continue to look at them. The sixty percent submission doesn't mean we're done. We're going to continue to refine the design up through the ninety percent submission. And we may look at other things as we're going through and we'll discuss those with the committee. But anything that we've. Uh, discussed with the committee right now as far as value engineering have taken nothing away from the design intent. Or what we thought the project's scope was going to be. It merely had to do with finishes. And, and materials and design changes as you're going through the process. That's all. So we will continue to evaluate them. As we go through and we've even, you know, even for the projects that we've bid as part of the. Design or the pre-award meetings that Kevin had discussed, we talked to the contractors about, did they see a different way? That, that the scope could be achieved, doing something a little bit differently because we're open to other alternatives. We didn't find anything that was different. Um, but we, we're open to that also while during the bidding phase as well. So. We're constantly monitoring and refining the design to make sure that we get the design intent at the best possible price we can.
Thank you.
Another example, if you recall, when we were working on the, 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 the scope reviews for the uh, high school parking lot changes. There was a, a, a change that the architects made because we, you know, of the way walking patterns, whereas it actually ended up. Actually ended up saving us money. So those are the kinds of things where, you know, it, it ended up being preferable and saving us money. So those, those little design things, that was like thirty thousand dollars. So those are the kinds of things we're going to continue to look, look for as we are going through phase two. And we're going to be doing our more detailed walkthroughs, as you know, soon with those designs. So.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I think the, the two of you and, and thank you Savaria for really spelling out what, what it means when we use that term. Uh, that's, that's a great explanation. And as you said, you know, just both of you just said, we, we are approaching that sixty percent design phase for, for phase two this, this coming month or so. And I wanted to turn to, to Kevin at Triton, just um, to get your take on something that. I find very hopeful in, in understanding the, the challenges we face, but I just want to understand better is that, you know, Brian and, and others have, have talked about this and, and Carol. The idea that there will be uh, you know. Potentially some of the money from the allowances and contingencies uh, available to help us get through to. Uh, you know, finishing these, these projects. And if you could just uh, sort of speak to, you know. Should we, should we not be too uh, dependent on that? Or are there real opportunities uh, to? You know, at the end of the day, be able to use some of that money as well?
You're on mute, Kevin?
Sorry. Uh, yeah, so great question. Uh, we do put into the budget a number of different types of contingencies in order to make sure that as we're going through the process. Because the process takes years, that we, we cover our costs, things like escalation. Things like design contingencies. That we still have in, in, within the phase two projects as it's going through its development. And uh, hopefully we won't need to use them and then we can roll those back into the other contingencies. And then obviously the other part, which was discussed and. Pretty well uh, at, at length with Carol was, we have us, we have uh, a, a construction contingency of approximately five percent. For each one of the projects that is set aside solely for. Um, owner-driven changes, something that along the way, somebody says, hey, this might be a good idea. Um, unforeseen conditions that you find in a job site, you open up a wall and perhaps there's a little specific. Um, insulation on a pipe that we have to uh, remediate. Or, or sometimes we make some changes due to some inconsistencies in the drawings. Uh, in order to maximize a particular part of the project. And then the fourth type of, of change order is really a credit. Um, so um, I do believe that we have substantial um, coverage for any incidentals that might come up. In regards to phase one, through that allowance that was talked about earlier, as well as through the construction contingencies that we still have set aside for. And again, as Carol had mentioned, if none of those are used. Uh, that go, that comes back to the district, that rolls back into the next project. And so. How do we try our best to make sure we have that money available? Is what we've been doing all along, constantly reevaluating the drawings to make sure that we've got. Very clear and concise drawings that the contractors won't find any issues with when they put the projects together. Uh, and uh, issues in terms of coordination between contractors, which is often where you find some of these problems. Uh, identifying work that um, certain contractors have to do. So part of our task as we're developing these drawings is to make sure that we've eliminated a lot of these gray areas along the way, right? So we're maximizing the design, ma- being very practical about costs. And then we attack the drawings, both from an architectural and then Triton from a, with a construction background as a contractor. To try and alleviate any of those gray area items that might result in a change order down the road. And therefore trying to save more costs in your contingency. Our, in the past. We are pretty good at keeping your contingency dollars within two to three percent. If we're holding four or five percent, chances are, as long as the, as long as the district doesn't come back and say, hey. There's something I'd like to do to be, you know, along the way, the chances are we're, we're going to see some savings within the contingencies that we can roll over to phase two. Yeah, you know, we, we are a little conservative with our numbers, not a lot. We are practical about the numbers to make sure that we're maximizing the dollars. I think that the whole team has done an excellent job at that and asking the right questions. So. Um, I'm very proud of where we are, very happy about moving forward. So I'm very proud of where we are, very happy about moving forward if the board chose, chooses to do so. You know, and this kind of goes back to some of the questions that happened before. Any, wherever we are at the completion in September of phase one, we're going to reevaluate the total amount of dollars in savings, one way or the other, and adjust. So there could potentially be some things that we will build off of and make bigger projects out of. And perhaps some things that will, will make a little bit smaller. There is already a give and take in savings in phase two, as Carol had indicated or earlier on. Maybe some things get expanded, you know, I, I like to be positive about it. And, and hope that we'll be able to, at the, at a minimum, maintain everything that we had originally intended. And at a maximum, be able to do a little bit more within those spaces.
Thank you. So yeah, I just want to say thank you, Chris, Carol, Brian, Kevin Savario. Really great explanations about where we are in the process and clearly some challenges. But I think we've been looking very closely and I appreciate you explaining just the how we're trying to do that. So thank you.
Do any of the other trustees have any further questions?
Just so for the trustees in terms of next steps, we're anticipating approving the phase one contracts at our next meeting. They actually have to be approved within about the next 10 days or so, given the requirements that bids are accepted within 45 days. So if someone comes up with an additional question or has any concerns, please reach out to me, but otherwise they're going to appear on our agenda Tuesday for approval. If, for, for some reason, there's an, an issue that that comes up and we want to push that off, we'd have to have a special meeting to get them approved. Because if we don't accept the bids, they are then done and we, they would have to potentially rebid. So we obviously want to avoid that if all possible. I think, you know, what, given what we've talked about tonight, I think we're in a good spot. And I appreciate again, the efforts that, you know, Savario and Kevin and the rest of the team have done to scrub the bids and get us to, to this point. So, you know, that's our, our, our next step. Just to give you the longer lens timeline, B and G will continue to work on the phase two designs. And I think, you know, by, you know, late spring, we should have our, you know, those designs, I guess, maybe earlier in spring, you know, up to SED for approval, at which point we'll get additional cost estimates based on those, those designs. And then the goal would be to put those out to bid in the fall, utilizing that cycle. So we'd be, you know, back here, hopefully around Thanksgiving time next year, talking about the bids for phase two.
So seeing that there's no other trustee questions at this point, to the extent there are any.
One other quick point that I need to make in terms of this, the, the bids that you're awarding on, on Tuesday. There'll also be the bleachers, the press box and the bathroom that I'm going to be issuing purchase orders for as well. Those are part of the state contract or purchasing cooperatives. And I need to get those done as well. I, you know, obviously the capital money is going to be covering those purchase orders. But I need to get those in because there's a lead time for ordering those items. So along with your, I, I purposely have waited to make sure that the board was going to award these other bids because the timing goes together. But assuming that that occurs on Tuesday night, I will be looking to process those purchase orders that go with that. So there's, and, and also the music casework because all of that we want to get done by the summer as well. So I just wanted to put that out there in public as well.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, that could speak to, since every school district tries to do work over the summer. There's a pretty long lead time on some of these types of items. So that's why if we can get them in now, we should have a, a good delivery lead time to get those materials to the district so that they, they can be installed over the summer. So with that, we're now at the point in time where we have community questions or comment. So to the extent there are community members who would like to pose a question or make a comment, if you put your name and address in the Q and A function, you can be recognized. To do so, you also have always the opportunity just to send the board an email at, or at our board email address, which is board@urbanin schools.org. And you'll get a response that way as well. So I'll give anyone who's out there a chance, if they want to pose a question publicly, to put their name, address in the, in the Q and A. Otherwise.
Right. We're waiting for that. I know Michael made some comments about, about the team and the commitment that's been there. And you commented, Kevin did. You know, this has really been an, an incredible effort and one where I would say the committee has had a laser-like focus in achieving its goals and objectives. And, you know, we want to look back to the prior board officers that were involved, prior committee members. Maria Kashkin, for example, who's played a critical role in this process. But I, I don't, the community can truly appreciate the, the amount of time that the trustees put into serving on the Buildings and Grounds Committee. I don't know that in the last year, if there's been a vacation period where we haven't met for, for hours at a time, meeting on weekends, outdoors and inclement weather. So you as trustees certainly deserve tremendous accolades for the, the time and the commitment that you have dedicated to this work. And, you know, while it really has been a team effort and our, our partners have been incredible. So Kevin Savario, Cole and Brian, who are also watching, really have been key contributors and have been great partners. Gary's been an incredible worker bee, great thinking, knowledge and experience. But Carol, I do need to acknowledge you and thank you for the incredible dedication and the level of commitment and work that you put into this. Because you really are the person in many ways that's behind the scenes, keeping the glue together in a project such as this. So I have to publicly extend my appreciation and kudos to, to you as I did for the trustees.
Thank you.
Here, here. So then again, not seeing anyone who has put their name and address in the Q and A functions. If you, we don't have a practice of reading questions that are put in Q and A. So if there's anyone who wants to ask a question that hasn't been addressed or made a comment, you can go ahead and put your name and address in the Q and A and you can be recognized. But if not, we're going to move on in a minute. So I, I will say that our, our next meeting is a, as we talked about, is a regular meeting on this coming Tuesday, the 12th. So if you want to join us for a regular meeting, please, please do so. It'll be 7:30 in, at the campus, but also for the community to participate in via Zoom. Excuse me. So not, not seeing any community members who are looking to be recognized to speak. At this point, can we get a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? I, again, thank you, everyone. Again, thanks to Carol's, Chris said, and all the professional partners for joining us tonight. And obviously, you know, this is, I'll say, you know, the halfway point in our discussion. So as we've said, more to come.
And Brian, thank you as well.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.